Welcome to the Village of Wappinghurst Falls monthly regular meeting of the mayor and board of trustees. Today, Wednesday, January thirteenth, 2021. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the good republic which stands. One nation, under God. At this point, does anyone have any points of recognition or announcements or special events they would like to talk about? Okay, roll call, trustee Markajon.
Here.
Trustee Catalano.
Here.
Trustee Neznik.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Here.
Trustee Panessa.
Here.
Trustee Lammers.
Here.
Village attorney Wallace.
Here.
Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's March thirteenth, 2020 executive order, two zero two point one, as extended, which suspends certain provisions of the open meeting law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the village website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the village webpage and on the village's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for public hearings have been properly published. First on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? None. Notice has hereby given that the board of trustees of the Village of Wappinghurst Falls will conduct a public hearing on the thirteenth day of January, 2021, at seven PM via Zoom regarding adoption of the implementation plan per executive order number two zero three of Governor Andrew M. Como, New York State Police Reform and Revention Collaboration, Zoom collaboration, collaborative, sorry. Zoom information will be posted on the village board meeting page of the village website three days before the hearing, and it was. Please take further notice that the purpose and intent of the proposed implementation plan is to ensure that all citizens are treated equally, fairly, and justly before the law, and with greater transparency. By order of the village board, Village of Wappinghurst Falls. At this point, I would like to have the village attorney expand on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Village Clerk Carge. Can you please put the materials in support of the resolution and the public hearing materials up for the meeting for the public to see? This is a public hearing of the governor's executive order regarding the New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative, which was signed in July of 2020. And basically, it was to, it was signed into law by the governor by executive order to seek a public discussion about policing strategies, including but not limited to use of force policies, procedural justice, studies addressing the systemic racial bias and racial injustice in policing, implicit bias awareness program training, de-escalation training and practices, law enforcement, assisted diversion programs and restorative justice practices, community-based outreach and conflict resolution, problem-oriented policing, hotspots policing, focus deterrents, crime prevention through environmental design, violence prevention and reduction interventions, and model policies and guidelines, which were promulgated by the New York State Municipal Police Training Council. And towards that end, a collaborative effort that was led by Commissioner Walter Burke, which I will be asking him to explain his involvement. A stakeholder group was actually assembled to look at these studies and to come up with a collaborative plan that we could forward to the governor to make sure that we are in compliance with the executive order. And before we can forward that collaborative plan, this particular public hearing and the public is being asked to make comment here, where your comments would be incorporated into the final work product that we are going to be sending up to Albany to certify our compliance. So at this point in time, before I go any further, I'm gonna just hand off to Commissioner Burke so he can explain the steps that were taken to get, to lead us to this point. And then I'll take over to explain where we're going from here.
Thanks, Craig. Okay, in August, Dutchess County formed a collaborative of police chiefs and public officials to work on the governor's executive order on police reform. Below is what they did. They asked us to submit our policy to the sheriff's office for review. While they were working on that, we continued to meet every two weeks with, on a Zoom meeting where they would discuss ways that we could work with our local committee on how we can reform our police department. Shortly before our first meeting, we've got our use of force policy back, and we had six areas that did not meet standard. Those are those listed areas there. We added those to our policy. We also recommended to combine our policy into, from a use of force and deadly use of force to policy of use of force. After that was done, we posted it on our website. All of these standards, all these six standards here are recommended by New York State Department of Criminal Justice. These are accredited standards that they want in a use of force policy. In October, the village reformed our own committee to discuss the governor's executive order. At our first meeting, we had four stakeholders from the community. We had Reverend Hunt, Shelley Wallace, Brian Lammers, John Riley, and Principal Thompson. From the police department, I had myself Lieutenant Paolo Capirelli, police officer Jen Farrell, and police assistant Jeanette Williams. We talked to the stakeholders about our personnel, our training, our recruitment, our equipment in the police department. I also provided all the stakeholders with a copy of the New York State Reform and Reinvention Guide. This is the book the state gave us as a guide on how we proceed through this process to come up with some type of reform in our police department. I also gave to the members that were there, stakeholders, six, or excuse me, eight areas that I felt that we should address, and that is procedural justice and community policing, community engagement, use of force, misconduct, police policies and procedures, our recruitment and retention, training, and a community survey. At our second meeting, I presented stakeholders a copy of the use of force policy, which we reviewed it. And after they reviewed by the people in our committee there, they, they felt we had a very strong use of force where there was a lot of restraint that officers, a lot of measures officers have to take before they use force, whether it's use of force or deadly force. And with those extra things that were added on from the sheriff's office, our policy was, was real strict in what we had to do and when we had, what we had to report. We also decided that we would increase our training. In July, we started de-escalation training for our officers. All officers went through that training, and that training will be done on a yearly basis. Probably sometime when we're doing our firearms training, we'll be including our de-escalation training in that time. We also gave our our stakeholders a copy of our general orders, which is over 400 pages. They asked for different sections from our general orders, and we would discuss with them different questions they had about the areas in the general orders. That's our policies and procedures. At our third meeting, we had, we started having people come in from the public. We had Doctors St. Germain from the mental health, from the county mental health, come in and talk about programs that are available for, for people in crisis. He told many different things that we didn't know, and we had a lot of information now that he provided and numbers that we can call of people who might need to have some type of assistance. Our fourth meeting, we had two more people. One was from the homeless programs. She came in and discussed homelessness. If we come across anyone who's homeless, all the different places that they can seek housing on a short and sometimes a long-term time. This, the last speaker was a person from a mobile crisis. What they're trying to do is respond with police officers on a 24-hour basis. So if we have a person that we're dealing with and we felt that we're not be able to communicate with the person well, we can reach out to them and hopefully within a half hour, they'll be able to respond to the scene. We, when we discussed with our, our committee there, we tried to strive with them that we were looking for ways to improve our community, or excuse me, our police department. We were open to any suggestions from, from them or anyone else in the public. We put out to the public several times through the village website and our police department website, looking for public comments. At one time, we actually posted part of our community survey that we plan on mailing out to the community in June. And we got a big, a fairly large response from that. Most of it was positive. There was a couple of negative responses to some of the questions, but most of it was very positive for the partial survey that we did. At our fourth meeting, or excuse me, our fifth meeting, we drew up some things that we think that we really need to address. One of our things is our general orders or our policy and procedures. We've had that in place since 2008. There hasn't been any real change to it other than minor revisions. So I felt that it's time that we look to completely do over our policies and procedures. And I looked into a company called Lexipol, and they do departments across the country. They have quite a few in New York State. The city of Poughkeepsie is with them right now, town of Fish Gill, town of Poughkeepsie, and the sheriff's department is, sorry, the sheriff's officers considering them to do their policies too. Basically, what they do is they keep a policy up to date. I mean, we just don't know all the changes that happen that could affect our, our policies that we have in place. So by joining this company to have them do our policies, they constantly will send us updates and reviews. They also make it more transparent where all of our policies will be on our website. So no matter how, what, what we're dealing with, how we deal with it, a person can easily go on our website and look up how the police officer, you know, conducts himself out there as far as our policies. It also offers a training option, which right now we don't have. If officers are required to read updates that we put in revisions that we put into policy, but there's no follow-up as far as like a training thing. So what they do is every month they send out a section of the policies where they give a scenario or questions, and your officer has to answer these questions, and based on his responses, we'll know if he understands the policy that he's, he's been trained, been quizzed on. They also have a policy review and management. There are third-party reviews. So like I said, it's someone else besides ourselves looking over our policy. And they have understanding of best practice across the country of all policies from all police departments. So we'll have a policy that is, is more more, more substance from, from other departments and not just what we think sounds good. Some of the other things that it would provide is providing a solid policy head start with over 160 policies based on federal, state law, as well as best practices. Allowing us for sharing the key policies with our community, like I said, posted on our website. Short-term goal would be to completely update our policy and procedures, like I said, that haven't been done since 2008. A long-term goal will have a policy and procedures that meet New York State accreditation standards. This will assist Wappinghurst Falls to become an accredited police department. The, the next item that we, we were, like I talked about before is a community survey. The, the guide of the reinvention stated that is one of the things you should have is a survey of your community on an annual basis to find out what your community is thinking about their police department. Hoping that with the survey, we'll be able to improve on our programs and our training of our officers. The final thing is our officers usually only receive maybe four, eight hours of training a year. That basically is firearms or CPR recertification. What we're going to be doing starting this year is we're going to have 20 hours of in-service training, not counting hours of, of training where an officer might go outside a department for training, but this is in, in-service training. A lot of these lists on the list here have never been used in our department. Like I told you before, de-escalation training is new. Implicit bias training is new. We're sending an officer next month to be trained on that. Procedural justice, Officer Farrell and Lieutenant Capirelli just went through that training, and now they're certified to come back and do that in our department. In a few minutes, I'm gonna have Officer Farrell tell us about that training, the pursuit of justice, how important it is. And that's something that all police departments in the state are getting. From that list, ethics training, we're going to be doing that every year. And then many of these other trainings too will be doing on a yearly basis. But those ones I just named are the most important ones that we'll be doing every year. New York State accreditation requires you to have at least 21 hours of in-service for you in accredited department. And like I said, we're striving to have at least 20 hours a year of training. I don't know if Officer Farrell can hear me, if she can.
Commissioner Burke, before Officer Farrell chimes in, can I just ask, were any of those public comments that you just discussed, were they incorporated into the draft reform and reinvention plan?
From that survey comments that we got?
Yes.
Some of the, one or two of them, maybe. I'd have to recheck it. Most of the, if you look at the list I gave of the eight original ideas I gave out to the committee, three of them are off that list now. That would be the policy and procedures, the community survey, and the training, increase in training.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Officer Farrell.
Sorry, that's okay. Hi, I'm Officer Farrell with Village of Wappinghurst Falls Police Department. So Commissioner Burke asked me just to speak briefly on procedural justice and what the course is and how important it is to our officers to receive the training. The members of the police department agencies across the country are going to be receiving this training as well as all of New York State. Most of Dutchess County is going to receive the training, and almost every officer in the county will be certified by the end of 2021. So the importance of procedural justice really has to do with teaching our officers how to interact with the public and some of the objectives that we will teach within that course. Because there's, it's a three series course, so officers will go through procedural justice one and procedural justice two. About six, six to eight months later, as well as implicit bias training, hopefully we'll be able to incorporate the procedural justice two and implicit bias together. But procedural justice one, some of the objectives that we want to make sure that our officers get while they're in that training is defining some of the things such as like legitimacy and what procedural justice is. Defining and reviewing the relationship between the police and the community and how important it is and how you interact with that. We're going to talk to the officers and try to teach them about self-wellness and how important the mental health is amongst not only the community, but amongst ourselves and keeping ourselves well so that we can be out on the street to interact appropriately and professionally with the public and understand the role that history has played in hindering some of the legitimacy issues that we have had culturally across the country in some of the different communities. Some of the different things that we're really going to emphasize and talk on are the four pillars of procedural justice, which have to do with using your voice and remaining neutral, being respectful and, and giving a fair treatment process, as well as gaining the trust of both ourselves and the community. So hopefully all of our officers, excuse me, should be trained within the next month or so. We're hoping to put everybody through the procedural justice one training, if not within the next couple of months, and then move forward with that. So New York State has implemented that most all of our officers go through the procedural justice training. And we have two instructors now within our agency, as well as the assistance of the city of Poughkeepsie Police Department master instructors who are also willing to assist us if we need the, need the help. Commissioner, did you want me to speak about anything else?
Unless you have something else on training, that'd be great.
Not at the moment. I, I think you touched mostly on everything that we've done. I can't see the training slide that was up before, but I do remember looking at it and seeing that a majority of our officers are already, I would say, you know, statistically, number-wise, 90% trained in almost everything that's on that slide. If not, some of the things, some of our officers have in, you know, put in for the training requests for the upcoming year to go to some of those trainings. So I think by the, you know, in the next year, most of our officers will have everything that's on that list that you had posted before, because I was reading through it when it was posted.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So like I said, we've, we're still waiting for comments from the public to come in. Hopefully after this meeting, we get some more ideas to come in. We can work on those and, and hopefully by the middle of February, be able to put our final draft of this plan together so we can meet the April first required time of completing this.
So what I was going to recommend to the board of trustees at this particular point in time is to get a draft of that implement, implementation plan up on the village website for the public to see and for the public to weigh in and comment on and to keep the public engaged so that we could get more input that may or may not be incorporated into the final product. Once the proposals have been, and ideas have been shared, hopefully we can continue this public meeting to the next, to the next meeting date, which is February tenth is our next meeting date. I, I think that a final plan can be drafted and ready for the board to take action at the February workshop, which would be February 24, unless anybody else has any objection or ideas about how to and when to vote on that particular plan. So this draft plan is in its release stages right now for public comment. We're, we're here to educate the public, which Commissioner Burke, you're doing at this particular point in time. Next steps would be to revise the plan to incorporate public comment. And then finally, ratifying the plan. Once it's ratified, it goes up to Albany to be certified, and we will be in compliance with the governor's executive order at that moment in time. So that's the, the overview of action going forward, and this all has to be done by April first, 2021. And we have to keep, keep moving on this, and I commend everyone involved to this point for.
I'd also like to, to make mention how instrumental Todd Bowen was in keeping me personally just because I was on the committee, and there were, there were nights where I was held up at the nursing home. And I was late for them, but, but Todd always kept me, kept me abreast of the meetings and what was going on. And I just want to personally acknowledge him and, and thank him for his participation.
So I would ask the board to consider a motion to keep the public hearing open to the next board of trustees meeting on February 10.
I just want to, Craig, I just want to thank, I don't know if any of the stakeholders listening to it. And like I said, especially Todd, he helped me a lot, a lot with this, putting these meetings together and getting all the information out to everybody. But I'd just like to make sure that all the stakeholders know that how well we appreciate that, all the help they did with assisting us with this police reform.
Thank you, Walker. I think you've done a fine job. I really do.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the board want to make any comment? Are there any members of the public here that would like to make any comment about the proposed plan? I'd ask that you raise your hand in the Zoom chat. Is there anybody raising their hand in the Zoom chat? Let's wait like another minute to see if anybody else has any public comment. We just need a, a motion from the board, one of the board and second to adopt that motion to adjourn the public hearing for further comment in the public.
I just want to say I didn't catch his last name, but a memo came up. I believe his name was Edward. He just wanted to say thank you. So I don't know if anyone caught that.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Yep, thanks, Mayor.
Todd, if you could just put the draft plan on a, on the village website again and advise the public that any public comment will be continued into the next board of trustees meeting. That would be helpful.
Sure, no problem. Are you talking about the 27th or in February?
We're going.
Because you have the workshop.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, we can, we can do, we can continue the public comment to the 27th.
Or just. Yeah, just advise the board you have a public hearing on the 27th for contract five KC, so I'm not sure if you guys want to double up. Or just wait until February? Or just wait until February.
I think we should do it at every meeting we have until it's completed.
Okay. Why don't, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing to February twenty seventh for further comment from the public?
Make that motion to January twenty seventh.
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Carry. Okay, next on the agenda.
Hold on.
Action.
Did devote carry? I didn't know. You want to do a roll call of the vote?
Okay. Roll call vote. Trustee Marka John. Looks like Bob Relly is on the screen now.
Yes.
I've seen some that come across before that Kevin and John left the meeting.
They left the meeting for good?
We're having some problems with Kevin and Billy. I'm going down right now to see what's going on.
Yeah, we're going to need their vote later on. Okay, is Bob Relly still there or what's going on with that?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can.
You hear me?
Yes.
My video is blocked by the my video is blocked by the administrator.
You may start your camera at any
Can I start your video because the host has disabled it?
All right, we're in the middle of a motion. Let me complete that first. Trustee Catalano. Trustee Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber. Difficulties. Trustee Penessa.
Aye.
Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
We'll have to come back to the other two when they get online to complete that motion. Now, Bob Relly is on, I think, the comment about police reform.
That's why I joined it, but I got in here late, so I don't know where you've been on that.
You missed it.
Well, the public comment is still open. So if the board would like to give him, Mr. Relly, the platform to make any comment, I think now would be fine.
I, I don't really have any comment. I would, would need the background of what was already said. I've been to almost all the meetings. I missed the last meeting of the Reform Board and so I don't know where it stands.
Bob, it'll be on tonight after the meeting if you want to view it. And then the hearing is open to the twenty seventh of January when we have our next meeting. That'll give you time to listen to what was presented.
All right, that sounds like a good idea. I had trouble getting this Zoom working.
I'll email you, Bob, later.
The replay will be available on YouTube shortly after the meeting ends.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Todd, were you able to get Kevin on?
They're coming up right now. Hold on.
All right. You're both good. Okay. I have eyes from Kevin and Billy to leave the public hearing open and put it on the agenda for January twenty seventh. And in the meantime, we'll collect any public comment and we'll get the updates at that point. So that motion carried. Next on the agenda is I guess we'll wait a couple of minutes. They're rehooking up their computer here.
John, would you, sorry, would you want me to go? While they're trying to fix the technicalities because I don't have anything to vote on?
I don't really want to shift. You're on shortly anyway, so.
All right, yeah, I can, I'll wait.
Can you let Kevin in, Rich?
Just takes a sec to react.
Yeah, Corey, I'd like the entire board to hear what you have to say.
Sure. Sorry about that.
Okay, we're back. I would like to have we're take action on the minutes for December ninth, twenty twenty, December sixteenth, twenty twenty, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty. We have a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make it.
Seconded by Trustee Nesnick. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Authorization to pay bills as approved warrants.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Penessa, seconded by Trustee Lammers. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right, we have a grant update by Grant Rider Kory Usevich.
Hello. So it'll be a little today, but before I go in to the list of grants, I just want to say that I have well, I should say this, the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, they had designated the Lower Wapoona Creek as a super fun site a couple of years ago, and they really haven't done much with it. Lower Wapoona Creek, for those who don't know, is basically everything after the falls to the Hudson. They actually came and met with Matt Alexander when he was still the mayor. They met with him a few months ago. And they met at the site and their plan is to finally put into place a plan to start cleaning it up. They hope to have that plan by, I believe it was twenty twenty-three. But anyway, they've contacted me this week. And one of the things they want is they, they have this program called CIP, which is Community Involvement Program. And basically, they like to get to know the area they're working on. The people, they like to know more about the people and such. And basically, what they told us was with this CIP, it's kind of how they decide the order of urgency. Basically, the more kind of like the squeaky wheel gets the grease type of deal, like the more they hear for certain areas, the more they'll attract to that area. So they've asked if, if we can maybe get some people, if I can get some people and along with the woman I'm working with, the EPA Danielle. If we could get a few people from the area to answer some questions just about the area, how long they've lived here. What are their thoughts about it and such? Nothing crazy. It's not like a census or anything like that, but if that is something you're interested in, I'm doing it myself. I'm going to invite some trustees to do it. I'll speak to them at later times, but really just the more the merrier. And again, the, a big thing about this is the more traction we get, the louder our voice is. That sort of gives us, it shows the EPA, the urgency. And, and I just think the more people we get, the more quickly we can get underway, possibly cleaning up our portion of the creek. So I just wanted to put that out there. If anyone is interested, you can contact me. Our phone number is two nine seven eight seven seven three, extension seven, or my email, which is cusevichwapojufallsy.gov. Both of those can be found on our website. So yeah, if that really interests anyone or if anyone wants to help out in any way, just let me know, and I think it'd be greatly appreciated. But with that said, now I'm just going to give a little list on the current grants. We have the LWRP grant, which is a Department of State grant to clean up or to start the cleanup for Wapoona Creek. We have a meeting set tomorrow to sort of get back on track. We took a bit of hiatus over the holidays as most groups did, but we plan on meeting again tomorrow. We've been doing these pilot projects that I've talked about a few times between Biochar and the Streamgo tanks. So we're, this is our final meeting as, as our nine element group for this project, and we're just, we're setting in stone sort of the last year of this project. So it'll be really good to, to just lay it all out and plan it right then and there. So that's tomorrow at two PM. Our Brownfield Opportunity Area nomination, this has been ongoing. Our nomination is complete, and it's been accepted by the BOA. We're just dealing with some of the administrative stuff behind the scenes. I talk to them almost every day, so hopefully our BOA can be released possibly later this year, which is a very thick document, but it's, if you need to know anything about the village and our future plans or what our needs are, that's going to be a really good source to look at. Our Brownfield Cleanup. Speaking with KC, we're going to start testing actual sites for Phase Two. Now with the EPA's approval, we're going to be able to start doing that later this year when the ground softens up a bit. The boathouse is almost near completion, and I know people have been hearing that for years now, since before I even started, but it is actually near completion soon. Barring a railing and a few electrical stuff indoors, that's going to be open this year, and hopefully with the times, we'll be able to actually use it and maybe hold an event there. And the only, the other project that I wanted to bring up today was the EV charging stations. We got I got insurance and everything I needed from the EV people. The, the people who were purchasing the electric vehicle charging station from. And we got that underway, so we're officially going to be able to submit that this week. And then hopefully, we can have some charging stations installed in different parts around the village in the oncoming months. So again, I was going to be, I just wanted to be brief today. The main thing I wanted to bring up was the EPA thing. But you know, everything's settling down now, now that we're in the new year and things are really starting to pick up, but just as for right now, that's sort of the immediate things on the list. So that's really all I want to say. I'm willing to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Corey, I just want to go over again that you'll have that information we looked for on the finance end by our next meeting.
Yes, yes, I started that when I left there today, and yeah, by next week, I'll have that stuff for you.
Thank you.
Corey, will you highlight the, just some of the items that you talked about tonight and format that I can include in the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll have that too.
Corey, the LWRP grant for the Wapoona Creek. You have that meeting tomorrow? Where's that meeting located at? Villachal or?
Well, it'll be via Zoom.
A Zoom, okay.
Welcome. If you want to come to Villachal, do it with me, or I can get you the Zoom info for it, but you're more than welcome.
I'm going to try to be here tomorrow by two.
All right. Even if you come a little late, that's fine, too.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Corey? We'll, we'll move on. Next on the agenda, in keeping with the schedule of the upcoming election in March, is a resolution appointing inspectors of election. Whereas by prior resolution, the Village of Wapoona Falls has been divided into three wards, and whereas it is the desire of this board to appoint inspectors and the chairperson of the election in accordance with provision of section fifteen dash one sixteen of the election law. Now therefore be it resolved that the following named duly qualified persons be and they are hereby appointed as inspectors of election for the village election districts as follows. Election District One, Ward One, Anne Marie Panaleo, Republican. Louise Lowney, Democrat. Election District Two, Ward Two, Susan Johnson, Republican. Kathy Massey, Democrat. Election District Three, Ward Three, Brenda Alfonso, Republican. Benny Fritz Schumanns, Democrat. Backup inspectors as followed, Pat Procone, Republican. Keely Larisella, Democrat. Inspectors to designate their own chairperson, and we'll do that there that day. Resolve that the above named inspectors of election shall, prior to the assumption of the duties, file a constitutional oath of office with the village clerk, shall preside at all village elections for the ward for which they have been appointed, and shall perform all duties of inspectors of election provided by law until their successors shall be appointed and be it further resolved that the compensation for inspectors of election herein appointed is hereby fixed at twelve dollars per hour and twenty-five dollars for meals per inspector. For all services to be formed with the general election to be held March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The foregoing resolution, once we have your approval, will be adopted January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. So I need a motion.
I'll make it.
That was Brian?
Correct.
Second by Mary Penessa. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Carry. Okay, next, there's a bond resolution dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Approval resolution amending the bond resolution dated November thirteenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing the issuance of three hundred thousand dollars of bonds of the Village of Wapoona Falls, Dutchess County, New York, to pay the cost of improvements to the village's community boathouse in and for said village to increase the estimated maximum cost thereof and the amount of bonds authorized to five hundred thousand dollars, an increase of two hundred thousand dollars. I'll need a motion on that, and I will also need what they call a super majority for which you may not know, normal majority is four, super majority for this board of seven is five. Can I have a motion to accept that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Who was that? Jen? Jen Nesnick made the motion. Can I have a second?
Yeah.
Mary Penessa, roll call vote. Trustee Marka John.
Yes.
Trustee Catalano.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Penessa.
Aye.
Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
Carry. Next, bond resolution dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Approval resolution amending the bond resolution dated December eleventh, twenty nineteen, authorizing the issuance of six hundred thousand dollars of bonds of the Village of Wapoona Falls, Dutchess County, New York, to pay the cost of improvements to the Village Franny Reese Park in and for said village to increase the estimated maximum cost thereof and the amount of bonds authorized to one million two hundred thousand, an increase of six hundred And the amount of bonds authorized to one million, two hundred thousand, an increase of six hundred thousand dollars. Same as before. I need a motion.
I'll make it.
That was Kevin.
I'll second. I'll second.
Ryan. Roll call vote. Trustee Mark John.
Yes.
Trustee Catalano.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Panessa.
Aye.
Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
Carrie. Okay, you got a memo I sent out shortly before this meeting.
Hello, John. Uh, just one comment about the uh, bond amendment vote. You'll uh, get everything to our bond counsel. Uh, he has to.
I will follow our our procedures uh, consistently. Yes.
Thank you.
I sent a memo out just before the meeting that I received from KC Engineering. About sewer hookup. On West Main Street, two oh seven West Main. There's a project going on there called West Main Lofts. And if you don't have the memo, that's fine. I can read it. The planning board authorized the project to go forward contingent on several items. One of the items is. That the village board approves sewer for the project. KC Engineering has performed their detailed analysis of it and here's what they're saying. The village can accommodate the proposed one thousand nine hundred and fifty gallons per day. Of water consumption and sewer flow as described in the submittal. DAP, which is environmental assessment form or EIF. So I have written documentation to support your approval. Of granting sewer for that project tonight.
The village engineer recommends it.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second was trustee Panessa.
Kristen.
Kristen Catalano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Approval to obtain a thirty day waiver for O plus G restaurant thirty two Marcus Street to apply for a liquor license. They would like to have a thirty day waiver. In these cases, I go to a Brian Murphy and I ask him if he ever, if he has any. Opposition to granting any such waiver. He does not in this case. He agrees that if the board approves, they can, we can grant the thirty day waiver.
I'll make the motion.
Where was the location again?
Thirty two Marcus Street.
I'll make the motion, John.
Kevin. Second.
Second.
Trustee Market John. Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie. We had communication from two. Firehouses. William T Garner voted Nicholas Marshall as a new member. A new junior member. And. SW Johnson said that Dominique Galarza has resigned. Can I have a motion to accept those two communications?
I'll make that.
Trustee Panessa.
I'll second.
Second trustee Catalano.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. I am receipt of the resignation from police officer Levine effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty one. I have a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make it.
Trustee Panessa. And I have a second.
I'll second.
Trustee Huber. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I have, I'm in receipt of a letter that was handed to me. And uh, it's from. Commissioner or superintendent. Peter Pajji. Uh, dressing the board and treasurer. That I can read it to you if you don't have it. It's to mayor. It's to trustee Huber and the village board. As I am sure you are aware, longtime highway department worker informant Anthony Marcelly has retired. After twenty two years of service with the village. His last day of work was November thirtieth, twenty twenty. Mr. Marcelly deserves our gratitude for his many years of hard work, sacrifice and dedicated service. I would like to promote Tom Polakowski to fill the position of highway department foreman. Mr. Polatowski has been with the village highway department since July twenty eighteen. His exemplary work during the that time, along with his previous twenty plus years of work. In the construction industry and his laborers union training make him fully qualified. To perform perform the task required of the highway foreman. I am confident that Mr. Polatowski will do an excellent job in a new position. So I was glad it was handed to me because like any position that you want to promote or that you want hired into. I, as your interface with civil service, need to ensure that that position does exist and that the candidate is qualified for it. So after receiving that. Letter to you, I called civil service because I wanted to verify that the working position. Working foreman position was in fact available and it is not. It's been changed. To called working supervisor. So. And and I asked, well, what's the reason for that? And the reason is they don't have, use the word man anymore. So it's not foreman, it's working supervisor. Just for your awareness. But I did a comparison of the working foreman. Class and distinguished features of the class and compared them to the new working supervisor class. And they are similar and I will read to you what the working supervisor position entails. Distinguishing features of the class. This is a broad class encompassing employees who. By virtue of virtue of their experience and expertise. Are selected to lead a small to medium sized group of laborers in one or more unskilled. Or semi skilled construction, maintenance and or repair activities. Typical activities include the reservicing of streets, repair of water and sewer lines. Maintenance of parks, buildings and grounds. Collection and incineration of refuse, et cetera. The work is usually performed under general supervision of a higher ranking supervisor or superintendent. Who outlines assignments in detail and makes periodic inspections of work in progress. A working supervisor may be required to work shifts and may be subject to emergency call twenty four hours a day. Typical work activities. The following is indicative of the level of types of activities performed by incumbents of this title. It is not meant to be all inclusive and does not preclude. A supervisor from assigning activities not listed, which could reasonably be expected to be formed by an employee in this title. Supervisors and participates in a wide variety of labor activities such as snow plowing, landscaping, painting. Grading roads, shoulders, digging ditches, erecting fences, cleaning pipes and catch patients. Patching roads, picking up debris and litter, repairing equipment, tree maintenance, et cetera. Assigns individual tasks. To and checks the work of subordinate personnel. Leads in more difficult tasks, may operate construction equipment. Maintains employee time cards, worksheets and equipment usage reports. Minimum qualifications. Two years of experience performing or supervising construction, maintenance and or repair activities. Special requirement. Possession of a New York State valid driver's license at the time of the appointment. Some appointing authorities may require a valid CDL. Commercial driver's license relating to the equipment being operated. So. Again, that is very similar to the working foreman. Position and the working supervisor current position. So if the board will. Make a motion to accept that promotion of Mr. Polatowski, I will duly note that. On in the minutes.
I make a motion to table it to determine if our action will violate the CBA contract as our labor council council needs to determine this.
I went down and talked to Pete about it and uh, Pete has reached out to Kenny. And there's, there's uh, there's no bargaining unit for this. It's basically a peace decision. It's up to Pete to pick.
There's no, is is the person who's being promoted part of the bargaining unit?
Well, he's in, he's definitely in the union, but it's not a. Uh, what I'm looking for about it. It's it's not a, it's it's basically up to the the highway superintendent who he can pick. So it doesn't have to be by seniority. Pete has talked to all the personnel down there and they're fine with it.
I think.
Reached out to Kenny, the by, or he reached out to Kenny, the president of the union and Kenny has no problem with it either.
I mean, I would, this is the type of matter though that involves personnel and should be discussed in in executive session, but. Um, I I was completely taken off by surprise as to its inclusion in the agenda since it's not even part of the original agenda. So. I I, you know, this is uh, why we have executive session. So it's up to you uh, as to whether or not you you want to entertain this, but since it is a uh, personnel. Decision, I think that I would recommend that the board at least find out. If we're, we're, if there's uh, if we, if it can be done. For the next meeting, which would be uh, on the twenty, in two weeks.
Make it wait. Any personnel coming to meet?
Unless you want to have a a special meeting.
No, we can wait two weeks. We waited as long.
It's up to you, but uh.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I think if there were any questions. About, I mean, I know you, uh, Kevin, I, yeah, I know you said it, you know, they're good with it, but I would. Like to be sure, at least have something in writing that we could see that says that. There there's no conflicts there, just so everything is above board. Um, if we could hold off, I'll make it that decision. I would.
You like to hold off, we can hold off.
Can I just ask, what's the difference between Tony Marcelly who had the position and this? Person who's in the union that's looking for the position? What would be, what are, what is it that we need to check out? I'm only because I don't know, I'm not. Just want to be caught up on that. He's a union member.
He's a union member. He's.
He's leapfrogging anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
So in other words, the the real question is, is we're looking to see if this, there's any seniority in this? Is that what we're looking to see?
I just, I think it would be advisable to check with labor council to make sure that everything's on the up and up and that. You know, there's no grievable action.
Okay. And seniority sounds to me that would be the only grievable action at this point.
I don't. I'm not even sure. I I couldn't comment on something I can't really see.
So do we agree that you want to table it to January twenty seventh and do you want me to work with the labor council on it?
Please.
Okay, I can do that. Is that what the board wants to do?
Yes.
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 And I have a motion to table it and village clerk to work with labor council on the position.
I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Carrie. Monthly department stats. I have for the police department. Total calls of service, three hundred and twenty one. This is for December of two, of twenty twenty. Uh, one year ago, there were three hundred and sixty seven. Traffic tickets, there were four. One year ago, twenty two. Sick callouts, three, seven last year, about year before. Callouts other twenty one, nineteen. Or twenty nineteen, you had fifteen. Callout shifts not covered, ten. Last time, twelve. Domestics, eight, last were twelve. Lockouts, four, last time was thirteen. Larcenies were seven. Last time, three. Drug complaints, none, last time, one. Criminal mischief, three. Year ago, one. Accidents, thirty, last twenty seven. Burglar alarms, thirteen. Last time, ten. Medical, sixty one, year ago, forty five. So that's a high for over a year. Civilian complaints, none, that's consistent. Parking tickets were seventy three. That's new. There wasn't a record last uh, twelve months ago. Use of force, one. That summarizes the uh, police report. Next is the highway report, trustee Huber.
Uh, the highway has been busy uh, between the snow. They had a water main break. Out uh, North Pajji Terrace or North Gilmore, I'm sorry. Between in in the swamp there, they had a fix. That was a, we've, they've been looking for that for a few weeks between. That's that, that can go on the water report too, but uh. For a few weeks, they've been noticing. The tanks dropping of water and they finally found it through a leak detection. And they had a sewer main break down on Givens Avenue earlier this week. And basically that's it for the highway. They got the four wheeler up at uh, Players for the plow and sander. And that's it.
How's that working out? The four wheeler?
Uh, it hasn't been in a shop yet. They reached out today to see how it's making out and they haven't pulled it in a shop. They're waiting on a couple parts. We had to get a new ignition because they, the someone, the the key is missing. So. We're getting a new ignition, two keys.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, fire. Trustee Huber.
Fire, there was a twenty nine calls for the month of December and uh. We ordered new radios and portables for the chief's cars and. The two engines, ladder truck and the two rescue trucks, they were put in this past weekend. And then you're just finishing up on a few things. I guess they have a few more things to finish up on and the the radios will be done.
Okay, on safety, we have adequate PPE equipment available. Heather McCormick and Jessica McMahon, the treasurer, are putting together a procedure on how we should handle if we do get a COVID nineteen. Case here, how would we handle it? What course of action will we take so we have an actual written procedure? On what to do as far as quarantine and all of that's concerned. So I I think that'll be a big plus for us to have in our hand. Recreation, trustee Huber.
Recreation, uh, there there's no meeting for the month of January. They're going to be meeting at the Mizzera Park, the twenty fourth to take the lights down in the tree or out of the trees and bring bring the stuff back. So whatever's left by the twenty fourth, that's what's going to be done. I'm going to see if I can get them things done by this week or this weekend down there. So. By myself.
Okay, uh, water?
Water is uh, we had a major water leak like I. Water is, uh, we had a major water leak like I talked about before in the highway. We're on North Gilmore over there. That's been fixed. And, uh. We have another situation on. Prospect in Norton, or I think it's Norton Mizzier. There's a water, water line leak down there in the yard. So we'll be working on that.
Okay, and we heard from, uh, grants. I know Kevin, you talked a little bit about the sewer break. I think that summarized that up and that's it, that's it for the, uh. Committee reports. We have a section now called public input. If there's anyone out there that wants to input. This would be their opportunity. Okay, I think that, uh. If they do wanna comment and they don't wanna do it now, they can always do it on our website. So, um, that concludes tonight's village board meeting. So next on the agenda would be to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Kevin Huber and then trustee Panessa. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.